Okay guys, let's open up the screening on the zoning hearing at 7:45. I think we can call it order. So, I'm just going to run them and just turn it over to Mike.
Oh, you got to call it order and take the people that are here.
You want to call, you do all the calling and order.
Okay.
Just for the votes and stuff.
Yep.
Thanks for helping in so quickly.
So, I'm new to this a little bit.
Make a motion and we'll call this meeting to order.
Okay, I'll have to change to a second. Nick?
And then you just do your whole call.
Roll call, Nick?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passed, and I'm turning this meeting over to Mike.
Okay, thanks. First thing on the agenda, this is a public hearing, you won't be voting until the trustee meeting. This is just a public hearing on the changes for the text amendments. The proposed text amendment, first one, is to delete section 311.04 residential standards in integrated commercial. There's A, B, and C. I'll read A, the area of the site to be dedicated for residential uses shall be no greater than 25% of the total acres of the tract of land to be developed. B is dwelling units may be placed, may be located within mixed-use buildings or anywhere on the site in compliance with all setback requirements. And then C is acreage used to calculate residential density that is not developed for residential use shall only be used as permanent open space. The open space shall only be used to enhance the residential portion of the development. The open space shall not be used for site improvements or enhancements of the non-residential portion of the development, such as but not limited to landscaping, stormwater control, pedestrian and bicycle circulation systems. The reason for deleting 311.04 is to eliminate confusion with residential use. Only multifamily apartments and home occupation uses are allowed. Deleting this section is keeping in with the changes to the district. So that's the first. Then the second one is, unless you want me to stop and see if there's any questions or comments on those sections, and then I could read.
I would say leave that way.
Yep, we could wait.
Anyone have any questions?
Where's this piece of man?
So this is all integrated commercial zoning district? It's the entire zoning districts?
What?
The entire integrated commercial portion of the district? There's two contradicting ways. There's a way of figuring out the density and then creating your open space and doing it. And then this whole section somehow was cut and paste out of a different section through the years, is what I was told. But when you do the math, it leaves you with no buildable area. So, we're like, well, we can't have that. Yeah, this is only in the integrated commercial. Okay, the second one, moving on, is the proposed text amendment, change add research and development as a conditional use in the integrated commercial IC district. This is zoning section 311.02B2P, as defined in chapter 10 definitions, research activities, research, development, testing, related to such field as chemical, pharmaceutical, medical, electrical, transportation, and engineering. All research, testing, and development shall be carried in with entirely closed buildings, and no noise, smoke, glare, vibration, radiation, and order shall be detected outside of said building. So that being said, this was at a request of one of the developers. He came in, requested it at one of the meetings. When we were looking at the IC district, the zoning commission did due diligence, went back to regional planning. Nowhere in the code did we have this specific research and development. So, we did have some similar uses in light industrial, but they wanted to add it to the integrated. And regional thought it was a good idea, and here we are.
Does anybody have any comments or questions on the proposed text amendment? So Mike, what's the next step then?
Just close the meeting and we'll wait for the trustee meeting, for you guys to vote.
Is there any comments right here? Close the floor.
Yep.
We're going to make a motion to approve the meeting.
Second step?
Mike? Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting closed.
I figured it out, I was trying to log on the mountains. I need to just uninstall the other.
Hey, I'm going to make a motion to approve the meeting. Sue?
Tucker? Nick?
Yes.
My duty is to steward the life of the United States of America. In due repub, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, justice, or wrong.
That's the white song, you put us in great words. No matter what, we thank those beautiful springy dunes, waters, sunshine, and good weather, and things growing, and bringing new life. We just thank you for this time we have together today, in order to try to conduct business through the township. We pray to do each of our leaders, be with everyone in this peace today, let us all be doing our things in decency and order, and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I want to make a first announcement. It's Tim McGuire, who recently passed. Tim McGuire was...
December 5th.
We just found out about it. He, for those of you that don't know him, Tim was the person that donated one of our most beautiful parks, which will hopefully be open this year. It's actually behind Coles, and it's 40-some acres. And it's got a lake and trail, it's beautiful. So, as soon as we get it dry and we put any part of it out, it'll be available. But he passed, he was an operator donation. We want to have a good park. And I say that it's right behind that Coles, for those of you who don't know where it is. And I'm sure Cassie's going to be doing some bug outs or walks back there, so.
Yep.
It's a beautiful place, beautiful. And one person we did forget, I mean, I know I forgot a lot of people, but Harry Smith passed, for those of you that don't know. Yes, Harry Smith passed.
When?
Oh gosh. When I was in Florida.
Yeah, last month.
Yeah. And he was father of Nancy Smith, and Nancy Smith was his Michigan other. Wonderful family. Nancy Smith is, for all you that knows, Noah, he's the one that stimulated Kent to have a beautiful, new revitalized downtown. So, terrible off of the township. He should have played that squeeze box good, even back when he had that little oompa band, it was a fun time, so. So he was a great member of the Lions Club, and we all truly miss him, but I'm sure he's up there with them, cousin father somewhere. The other office.
I have one. The next township trustee meeting will be May the 14th, and that's on a Tuesday. That's an evening meeting at 6:00 o'clock. Just want Holly to know, be aware.
Will we serve pizza?
Oh, maybe not. Probably, maybe not.
Okay. Let's hope everyone knows. Beth, you got anything?
No, I let Holly know, but I'll let the board know too. At that May 14th meeting, the local Girl Scout troops will actually be in attendance at that meeting as part of their governance badge. So they're going to come see how local government works. So, might be a little busy in here.
7:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
6:00.
Does anyone else have any announcements? Okay. Now, this is the time when we have our meeting. We don't, maybe yes, we don't have a schedule, so. Move on to the minutes. I've already made a motion that we approve the minutes. We have April 17, which is opening this. We have April 17, which is a regular meeting. And then April 26, we have a session. I think everyone was 7:00.
Yes, I will second that motion.
Okay. So we just need roll call.
Sue?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, now, the time on the...
The agenda.
The agenda.
So I'll make a motion to accept the agenda for discussion.
Second. Mike?
Do we have any changes?
Do we have any changes on the agenda?
No.
Your call.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, I'm going to make a motion for the purchase orders.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase orders. I reviewed this.
Second. Mike?
I'm going to stay.
Sue?
Yes.
And Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Need a motion for warrants?
Show move.
I'll second.
Nick?
I'm going to stay.
Sue? Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, we'll finish, I'm going to open the meeting for public comments. Let's see what we did before signing up in the face.
Yeah, you just slide up.
Yeah, but we had them, so they don't have to state their address, we just have them sign their name before they sign.
Yeah. People should sign on the back, so. So remember, we limit it to three minutes, and we're not going to, we're not going to just shoot back and forth. We're just going to listen to your comments, and we'll save them for later action. If there is action needed. Okay, who would be first?
Clyde?
You know, my neighbor, for some reason, has an autism. Clyde, yes. Has an autism, he's a child, about eight to nine years old. Went to the township, and I talked to David, he wasn't sure. Would they go to sign up there on the street that says that they have a child?
See, I'm not sure about that, I need to look into that.
I did check into that yesterday with the county, and the county engineers told me not to put the sign up, because the state doesn't recognize that sign. So the signage on the roadways have to be approved through the state, so. They said they wouldn't, they don't approve any signage.
Now, one of the problems we have, we're getting a lot of new, younger generation in there, and they're all in the car. So that 25 mile an hour don't mean much. Because somewhere between 3:00 and 3:15, there's a kid that comes down the street. He goes down to the turnaround somewhere, and then he gets back up the street. It, nobody pays attention to 25 mile an hour. So it is a problem, and I'll tell her that, you know, they don't recognize the sign. You know, so, but, you know, he's a good kid, but, I mean, he'll take off in a heartbeat, run across the street, you know. You know, they've got four, so, I mean, they do a good job with them. Got to salute them for that, but, you know. We really have two kids in the neighborhood, one is a teenager now, and you wouldn't know about him because he goes to school, and, you know. But there is a problem with the traffic down there. You would think, you know, being a dead-end street, you wouldn't think you'd have that problem, but we do have, you know.
Thanks Clyde.
Clyde, how old's the child that has autism, do you know?
He's about nine years old.
Do you know the family?
Oh yeah.
If you get an opportunity, just point them to our website. We have a program called At-Risk Resident. So basically, this is targeted towards, for example, someone who's on the autism spectrum particularly. They have a tendency to wander and leave, and sometimes they're attracted to things like bodies of water. But we have a, if they click on a link on that program on our website, they can enroll in that program. And what that does is updates all of their information about the child, et cetera, et cetera with that. And that gets uploaded into a secure database for our officers, along with a photo of the child. So if we find the child out wandering, we can check that database in the cars to see where the child actually lives.
Sure.
So if they want to get some additional information on that, they can...
Could I have it in the car?
Sure, they can give me a call, yeah.
Okay, then?
Yep.
Thanks Clyde.
Well Anderson, I'd just like to acknowledge the police department on their food drive for the hearing recovered, who's a success. We greatly appreciate it. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the good job that the contractor did on Klein Road. Paul really looks nice, whole area put down real well. Any more comments?
There are no more comments, I'm going to switch. Do we have any safety concerns? Too much pollen? But, okay, thank you. Now's the time to get into the record of our meeting, and no comments, we're just going to ask the business portion. Chief Mosley?
Thanks Mike, just a few items where you, this morning, updated under old business is, this Friday's going to be our Houses of Worship presentation. We'll be doing that here at the community center at 6:00 PM. That's going to be facilitated by Officer Mike Rhodes. I have a couple of items for board approval. The first item I need approval for is the acceptance of a $5,000 Walmart Spark Good Community Grant for the Brimfield Shop with a Cop program.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a $5,000 Walmart Spark Good Community Grant for the Shop with a Cop program.
Show move. Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick? Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And the other item I need board approval on this morning is, we've put together a request for qualifications to be sent out to area wellness providers, mental health providers. We're initiating a new program for our officers for officer wellness, which entails an annual wellness check that's provided by the police department. Obviously, officer wellness has kind of been a hot topic in the long course in our first and founder community in recent years. It was a topic of discussion at our chief conference over the last couple of days as well. So we're looking to put something in place to be proactive, to provide an avenue for our officers, to give them resources and assistance. So we put together this RFQ. I had a chance to overview this with Township Council Mark Adetti, had a chance to review that as well. So what I'm asking for approval for today is to allow me to send out that RFQ, to see what kind of response we get back with that, and then I'll come back to the board at a later date with follow-up on that.
I'd like to make a motion for the Brimfield Police Department, Police Officer Wellness Initiative, RFP to go out. No, I think it's a great program. What's the timeline for it, just for the RFP to sit out there?
Right now, I've got it, with your approval this morning, I will try to get this out, starting today, with due date of May 20.
Okay.
So we'll be looking by the end of the month to get that finalized, as far as what comes back, and to bring something back to you.
Okay.
All right, Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have for this morning.
Thank you, Lord. Fire department.
Okay, updates, old updates. The pickup truck was delivered, the old Explorer was traded in. The new pickup is not in service yet, due to some lights and sirens still to be put on it. Just the new business updates, we'll be participating in Field Career Shadow Day coming up. I believe it's next Monday, students will come to the fire department and shadow us for the day. So we have already a few that have reached out to do that, that's middle school kids.
On the older truck that was traded in, what year was that?
2010.
2010? Okay.
And then, we will also be asked, or we were asked to participate in a touch truck at Field on May 7, so we'll be taking a fire agent and ambulance out for the elementary school for that, so. Couple, couple community outreach is coming up. And that's all I have.
What time is that, touch a truck?
I'll have to find out the time. Okay, I'll call you.
9:30 to 10:30, or 9:30 to 11:00, I believe.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I'm assuming you guys will be there too this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be there too.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and read Holly had here. Progress of the fire station in town on construction, please read, town almost currently being 22nd, 24th. John and I have been inspected, and it's never blew it off. Athletic field parking lot estimated to begin next week. Five six or five seven, should take a week to complete, weather permitting. Completed the equipped glass donation, we collected hundreds of glasses, which will be donated to the shoppers, customers without order, and you all for the donations. Okay, and under the board approval, approval needed on notice of forfeiture of land for 1988 Old Forge. Two options. Township can petition for land, or to default to the state. The landmate will work with the state to acquire the land, and that can donate to the township. Need to identify proposed use, so we can rely on for the requested acquisition, the trustees want to acquire through a landmate.
I would like to make a motion for discussion on the forfeiture of land at 1988 Old Forge.
We also have that.
Okay, in, in discussion, I think what, what we need to do is do our due diligence and see if there's anything. I know there was a house there, a real nice ranch home that, that burnt out. And we do our due diligence to see if there's.
Was, yeah, they, they.
Squatter for, it was nasty, nasty. But just to make sure that there's nothing there on the, on the property. I'm sure they had a septic system and water or, oh, that may be a well somewhere.
Mike, didn't they collapse that septic system?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would suggest on this is like you similar, you know, go with the title company. Probably do some due diligence just to see some research on the property, what it was used for before.
I mean, do we have the time for the next meeting?
Yeah, we do have, there's an email out there that we saw that. Where, and that was the questions that we had, because we discussed this at the last meeting. We posed two questions to Adadi from Beamer Associates and they came back with their responses of the two ways that we could possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the reasoning behind both of those. Um, there's some concerns though from that email. It will be clarification from them related to the tax because there are delinquent taxes on that.
But this opinion that Bob said over there, the, outside of the debate, the tax is probably not a big.
Yeah, there was something about, did you read the part about it? We might need a resolution though.
Right.
That's the piece I needed, I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I'm just not sure of the tax, is even, it'll be an issue. But, you know, I mean, so we got a contact.
Just do it next week.
Say, but the one thing is, it is apparently part of the Buckeye Trail. Right, it's on that, which is, which would be a big reason to keep it.
So it could be a trailhead where you could put a parking lot.
To get on the Buckeye Trail. You know what I mean? I mean.
Do we know if the Buckeye Trail actually goes like directly? Do we know exactly where the Buckeye Trail is?
Apparently it goes over the back of the property.
Okay.
So I think there's still enough questions I would need to probably postpone this to get some answers.
Yep, okay.
You know, we check out that revealing about the taxes. The taxes that we have to pay.
I think that gets wiped on. I think it's just, like you were saying, a hundred dollar fee.
Yeah.
But we'll clarify everything before the next.
You want everything, everything taken care of, okay.
Well, sue, we need a motion.
No, we're just for discussion.
Okay, so.
I would agree that we, we.
Going to make a motion when we table?
Yeah, table for the next meeting, we can research. Make sure we have all our questions answered.
I'll send it back.
All right, um, to table the discussion till.
Followed for.
Following, yeah. Do you want to table it until, um, May 14th? Okay, well, next meeting, next meeting, next 14th. Okay, Sue? Yes. Nick?
Yes.
Mike? Motion passed to table.
Hey, updates. Submitting an application to participate with the insurance or account, that would be Holly. For approval, approval to allow to bed basis, 324 for the Maguire Park driver and parking lots. I will make that motion that we sent it out to bed to see what proper guests.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Okay. Nick?
Yes.
Sue? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, approval to hold a bed opening meeting for, I'm going to make a motion for approval to hold a bed opening meeting for Maguire Park, Drive, or a parking lot project on Wednesday, May 29th, 7:45 AM at the Brimfield City. Do you second?
I'll second that.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Zoe.
Thanks. Um, permit fees to date, you could see a 21, 334, 60. Our old business, um, we had a public hearing this morning at 7:45 regarding the IC district. The first one that I'll need a motion from is the board approval for, request approval to amend zoning resolution, section 311.04 residential standards in the integrated commercial district.
Yeah, I'll second that.
For discussion, um, this went through all the levels. It was advertised, public hearings, held by the zoning commission.
Yes.
Was there any feedback at the zoning commission on this?
Uh, it was unanimous approval.
Any feedback from the community?
There was one, there was an app, there was a couple residents that were confused. They thought that we were taking, um, I think it was Klein, I think it was Chris Klein. I think he, or Smiles, sorry.
Oh.
Smiles. I think he was confused and thought we were taking the residential portion out of the IC district. That is not, I think it's just the residential standards.
Okay, Clyde?
Yes.
Sue? Yes. Nick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Next one I have for board approval is a request for approval for the text amendment change, adding research and development as a conditional use in the integrated commercial district. Zoning resolution, section 311.02B, 2P.
Okay, I am wanting to make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Same questions was, do we advertise, they had public hearings? And then was there any feedback from the public on this one?
No, the only feedback we had, this was the actual request by a developer with, that has property in the IC district.
Thank you.
Oh, we have a comment either that we should is that all of this has gone over the Portage County Regional Board.
Correct.
They've approved all that, the county level also.
Yes.
Sue? Yes. Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, new businesses, um, we're happy to see as of yesterday. We had a meeting first thing in the morning and we met with Unified Construction Systems and they'll be moving into 4211 Carve in June. They're bringing 30 to 35 jobs with them. Uh, we're working on small business development grant for this company as well. So we welcome them.
What exactly is this?
Uh, insulation.
Insulation?
Mm-hmm.
Where did they come from?
Akron.
Are they building a new building or are they?
No, they're, they're going into where Sprayworks is. So Sprayworks is moving out and they're moving in, so. Uh, Maguire Park Maple Crest 2, TIF was approved by legal counsel. This was a while ago. They've, and, uh, we proposed roadway and parking lot engineering drawings are completed and approved by regional planning April 10th of 2024. That was all the Maguire stuff that you guys just passed, so appreciate that. There's a lot of work that went into that. We'd like to coincide that. We have easements going forward with the VA Center and they're going back and forth as well as sudden crossings. There's an agreement, so time is, the timing's everything on this. Uh, want to get that, that driveway in this year. That way if something changes hands or any of these agreements don't go away.
I see, start.
Um, they're on their second, I talked to building yesterday, um, and they're on their second, or their first adjudication order was issued April the 9th and they're resubmitting back in. Boy, that's, they should be getting permits shortly and then start right after. Uh, Town Center Master Plan, completed a TIF with Pride 1 to help build the Town Center Master Plan. Uh, Woolen Engineering developed conceptual drawings at the request of zoning commission. And Dave Holly and I met with the county engineer to start the process for the safe walk to school. So that process will be coming forward. That grant is 100% for engineering and construction. However, to get everything in, the data into ODOT system to be considered for this grant, we're going to need a firm to help us out. And, and it's a big survey that they have to undertake to get it. But the county is going to do all the homework, give it back to us, tell us who, who we should be using on that. They said it's a, it's a big, Dave and I and Holly were like, well, who does all this work? Because there's a ton of work that goes into this grant, but the firms actually do it. So we'll be coming forward in the future here with a firm to, to help supply that. That safe walk to schools is a two mile radius around the elementary school. So ODOT would, or the state would be looking at completing sidewalks within a two mile radius of the elementary. So that would actually take it down 43 as well. Um, not on this list, but just so you guys are aware, uh, I'm working with Parda and I'll have conversations with them today that we're going to try to connect International Drive to Macador. There's some wetland, wetland issues in the way, but Parda is willing to help fund that project. So I will be meeting with them and giving you guys updates on that.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike. Anything else you want to announce?
Yes, that's it.
Okay. Road departments.
Uh, yeah, uh, I got a couple items for board approval. Uh, I need the board approval to accept Melway Paving Company for the 2024 Chicken Seal Project. Per the county engineer's recommendation for $183,819.
Make that motion, Dave. Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Are they ready to go?
Uh, well, we've got to still do all the paperwork.
Okay, Sue? Yes. Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, then on the other side of it, I need board approval to accept Cardinal Asphalt Company for the 2024 paving project per, per, per county engineer's recommendation for $206,4298.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Dave, what, better than all the, a lot of what you're doing?
Not a lot. The roads we're doing on the paving project will be Hilltop, Broadview, Hollybrook, Countryside and Highland, plus Highway View, which the first list consists of Portage Commons. So it's, it's 1.13 miles.
Right.
Where the Chicken Seal is six point, almost seven miles.
Yeah, those aren't looking good. Okay.
Okay, Sue? Yes. Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I've seen, I've hardly seen any chuckles no more. It's not, I know we don't get to spell anymore, but, I mean, remember how I was acting today?
Right, well, we're getting a good maintenance program going, so we're trying to keep up on them.
Do you remember the boy road?
I remember the boy, and that's, you couldn't keep a plow on the road when you tried to plow on, so.
He's not a range out.
It's getting there. Uh, all right, for just my normal report, uh, as previously stated, the Klein Road Culver project, it's finished. They actually, Warner's Construction actually did a great job down there. If you get a chance, stop and look at it. It's actually really nice with the, with the new guardrails and everything down through there. So the box culvert, the cabbles, the whole, the whole setup.
The box?
Yeah, we put a box culvert across there. It's covered with asphalt, but we put a box culvert across. So, uh, a few other little things. Again, the touch a truck, May 7th, the Brimfield Elementary, reached out to us. We will take in a dump truck there for the day for the few hours, explain to kids what we use it for. Plus, we are going to, well, we've been doing some ditching projects. Pretty shortly if the weather breaks, we're going to start doing more work at the cemetery. We are also tomorrow, I'm sending a dump truck and a driver up to Wyndham to help haul debris from the storms they had. A group of townships are all getting together and sending trucks. So we'll have a truck there too to help haul stuff back and forth. Uh, here's a question for you. I had a resident reach out to me and she wants to know if she could plant flowers and stuff on the rain cul-de-sac off of Howlett. We actually mow the, the grass there now, but she was wanting to know if they could beautify their neighborhood by doing that. One side, I, I wouldn't mind, but like I explained to her, we do have salt trucks go around cul-de-sac, which would spray everything in, you know, the perennials, which would kill them off prior to spring. Two, I mean, I don't know if we can have a person work it out. Again, it'd be kind of like the Hunter's Ridge sign. We don't want residents working in our, in our right of ways.
You answered your question.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up to the board.
Yeah, I think my only feedback would be we just need to be very consistent. We're not going to do it at Hunter's Ridge, that would be my concern.
Right, so, I mean, that's, actually that cul-de-sac, I've been thinking about maybe even digging it out. Yeah, the grass and asphalt and the whole thing. I mean, it's not that big of an area, but just to get rid of the, the grass cul-de-sac. Because garbage trucks end up turning through half the time anyway.
Is that the last one?
Yeah, it's the one straight up on the rain.
I mean, how the other ones, that's not.
Yeah, they're pretty much gone now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, maybe this one's here, here to get it done.
Probably. All righty, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Just real quick, Dave, I know this isn't per se township, it's more state, but Sherman Road, the bridge, expansion joint is getting really bad there.
Yes, I've already been in contact, been going back and forth with the state for about four months now.
Okay.
They actually sent me a thing, uh, the other day. They're, they put a proposal out, they're going to mill the roads off, uh, 43 and 76, Sherman and 76, and Sandy Lake and 76. They're talking about milling them back 50 feet, repaving all that up to the aprons. They're waiting for prices to come back right now, so.
It just seems like after this winter it got worse.
Uh, see, they, they're going to look into it some more too because they thought last time just milling up off, it would, you know, get rid of the problem and they arose again. So there's some more they're going to look into it, but their main thing right now is, what the state got back to me with was, they're going to mill everything 50 feet away and repave it. So, so there will be delays when they do get to that on Sherman and Sandy. 43, they just close the lane here and the lane there, so.
Right.
So in a quote, we might even work with them. We may shut down, just shut Sherman Road down for the timeframe they need to do the milling. So it's just one of, we're still working on it, so, but it is in the process.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Arthur, the rec.
All right, I have some informational items for the board today. Um, I did also just want to acknowledge Tim Maguire's passing and, um, thank him and his sister-in-law for their wonderful donation. If you haven't been to that park, it's beautiful and it's going to be our best park for sure. So, um, I was very sad to hear about his passing, but, um, so a couple of updates for you, our program totals for April. We had seven programs with 35 engagements, which brings us to a year-to-date total of 28 programs and 274 engagements. Um, our rental totals for April were 47, um, and that includes all of our facility rentals. So that's, uh, 31 private parties and 16 internal and nonprofit rentals. And we've collected $1,470 in fees, which brings us to 120 total rentals so far this year with 47 private and 73 internal or nonprofit and a total of $4,170 in fees. Um, the soccer goals have been moved to Field Middle School for the season and the agreement was signed and everything. So thanks, Dave, for your help on that. And Hannah and I have been working on a citizen science project called Frog Watch, where we are recording frog data in our parks. Uh, we've recorded six different frog species, which means that our, um, wetlands in our parks are very healthy. We have a great variety of species and we'll be doing this, um, April through October. And that will go to a national database where they'll use that, um, information for frog research. Um, I'd also like to put out there, um, thank you everybody for your milk jug donations, but we got more than enough and we are not collecting anymore, so thank you for that. And, uh, new business, uh, we now have a parks ticketing system. So if you're out in the parks and you see, um, an issue that needs taking care of, you see holes in the dog parks, broken bench, something like that, um, you can very easily report that to us. Um, it's just a very simple, um, form where you put in your contact information and report the issue to us. Thank you, Joe, for your help on that. Um, and that's accessible on our website. There's a tab that says, um, I think it says help, help here, or help desk or something like that. Um, but it's on the parks tab of the website. And then, um, I mentioned a couple of meetings ago that we now also have a parks hotline, um, which makes our program information more accessible to those who don't use the internet, don't have the internet, don't use social media. Um, so we've updated this a little bit, so now there's a program information line. Um, you can just call and listen to the recorded message with the next three or four upcoming programs. And also there's a program cancellation line. So if you're looking for information, whether the summer concert is canceled, you need, um, Brimfest parade information, that'll be pre-recorded on that line. So you don't have to go searching for it, it'll be right there.
What's the phone number?
It is 1-844-287-7386. And the numbers, it's 1-844-BTPR-FUN. So Brimfield Township Parks and Rec Fun. And then our upcoming programs, on May 7th, we have a wildflower hike at 3:00 PM at Cranberry Creek Park. On May 9th. On May 9th, we have the timeless memory scrapbooking program from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the library, and that will be $10 a person. And then on the 11th, we have the Sioux Field Spring Cleanup Event from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And that is all.
So how many years have we been doing this, type of program?
Six.
Six? Good, thank you. You got a lot of people though, don't you?
She's good.
Yeah.
She's eating that now, so, get you.
Okay, Joe's live.
Um, I have nothing really new, uh, just continuing to, uh, help with the, uh, new town hall construction project. Working with the architect to make sure that everything is where it should be, um, from a technology standpoint. Um, and, you know, focusing on the meeting room, making sure it's gonna serve our needs properly. That's all we really have of all this week.
Yeah, that's great. Hey, thank you. This is the lead to you, right? Field drama?
Yes, the, yeah, on a, a different note, the, uh, Field, uh, Drama Club is doing, is doing their spring musical that'll open Friday night. So it runs Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, it's Once Upon a Mattress. Um, and the lead is my daughter. So a little plug for my daughter, she is the lead of the show. So if you enjoy theater or want to support the local, uh, you know, our, our high school kids, uh, please come out.
Joe loves this kind of stuff.
I, I, yes, I, I do a little bit of a background in community theater, so.
Kind of Vincent started a local theater club for adults. It was entertaining.
Good.
We'll build to an amphitheater.
Yes, I, I like the amphitheater idea.
They'll use something like that.
I, I, I think someday, uh, a nice amphitheater on McGuire Park would be, would be very nice. I think there's some.
Make sure the mosquitoes aren't happening.
Yeah.
It'll be a short show. Well, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, so. Cemetery.
Well, we have some old business and I want to remind everybody of the Memorial Day Ceremony. It'll be held at the Rusland Cemetery on Monday, May the 27th, beginning at 8 o'clock. We will have a flag ceremony, uh, invocation, address the memory of those who have passed on, the veterans for 2023. We'll do some songs and speakers and benediction and above all, we're gonna have some taps played. But after that, you can go down to the Methodist Church and have pancake breakfast that the Boy Scouts will be providing. And then at 10 o'clock, you go down to Southfield for the parade. So you have your whole day planned and, uh, just come out and celebrate Memorial Day and what all it means. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so, all good. Okay, the fiscal office, I don't know, I didn't talk to John, we cast it on this. I would like to make a motion that we, we knew the contract for late management on the McGuire Park. It will be the same price 2023. The cost will be 790 dollars per month, April through October, plus one time, 3,000 dollars cost for the muck biotics, muck digesters. Total market share will exceed 8,586 bucks. Any second for this?
Now, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, and I know this might seem like a lot of money, but when it comes to managing your lakes, if we don't do this, we're gonna have a.
We're gonna have a bunch of muck, is what we're gonna have.
We're gonna have a really covered.
And a lot of carp.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I think, you know, periodically having a muck, you are walking there to see if the muck is going to pop.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna, it hasn't been done in, last year was the first year you did it.
Yeah, Tim.
So it's gonna take some time.
Tim used to maintain it and then it went one year without management and you guys saw it last year, it went wild.
It's amazing how the, the algae and stuff has just taken off this year. And I think that has something to do with, uh, the warmer winters and stuff like that. So, yeah, I think it's a great thing, cause I mean, nothing better than a clean pond.
Yeah. The frogs like it.
Are you gonna name that better?
Um, I can, not right now, but.
I think we should think about it, cause they always name like something different.
Yeah.
Like Timmy? I don't know. Okay, do we have any questions? How many concerns? Okay.
Okay, Nick?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Wow, that would put me, that's a good job and Holly would not hear. Sorry, Catherine, I'm watching. Okay, well, thank everyone for talking.
Second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was closing out, I'm sorry. Sue? Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Your turn.
Did they get over and do a push speaker?
No, they haven't.